I'm going to call the order of the February 11, 2014, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you here tonight, to the council chambers tonight. Pleased that you're here. I also want to welcome those that are watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on their computers, and those who might be listening to us on the radio. So you're all welcome. This is your city government, and we want you to take part in any form that you choose to do so. So, welcome. Okay, I'm going to ask Clark, take the roll call of the council members.
Cummings.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be done by council member Cummings, and the pledge of allegiance will be done by our students who are here with us tonight.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do the things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to ask our individuals who helped us with the pledge tonight to stand up here, and we'll find out a little bit about them, and maybe we'll have a special treat tonight, something a little different tonight. Why don't you give us your name, where you go to school, what grade you're in?
My name is Brianna Backery. I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Grace Lutheran.
Hi, I'm Kalen Youngworth, and I go to Grace Lutheran. I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, now, now for the special treat that we have tonight, we have some cheerleaders here tonight. So I thought what we might have is a little special cheer tonight from our cheerleaders who's involved in the activity. I should say that they left at the end of the third quarter tonight, and the team was only ahead by one point, so we do appreciate them coming tonight. Okay, let it go.
We've got to beat that awesome thing out of him.
There you go.
We've got to beat that awesome thing out of him.
Can you teach the mayor to do that?
I hope all of you caught all the words. It was a special new cheer they had, the city council beat. I hope, I hope you heard.
I love it.
They may have to come back and, you know, in the future sometime. I do have a couple certificates of appreciation here. So thank you very much. You're free to take off now. I guess it'll be too late to go back and catch the rest of the game, but they probably have homework to do, they're busy all day. So, thanks for coming. Okay, we have three public hearings. The first two will just be, this will be the first time that we do these readings, and they have to be read twice. The third one we will be voting on tonight. The first two will not be voted on tonight. As I reach, as I read each one of these, if you'd like to make comments about them, please feel free to come forward. I think what I'm going to do both for comments for those of you that are here, and for the council, is I'm going to do the first two, kind of together, and so if you want to make comments, then you can come up and make comments about both of them. These will be looked at kind of as a, as a, as a package. So, at any point, in fact, when I read them three times each, and then if you'd like to make comments, come on up and you can comment on either one of them or both of them together at that point in time. We're okay with that? Citizens do the same thing? And then we bring it back to the council, because some of the things you might want to discuss apply to one or the other to both. Okay, here we go. Ordinance 14-57. Approve amendment to chapter 20, chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-35M design standards for single and two-family structures. Ordinance 14-57. Approve amendment to chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-35M design standards for single and two-family structures. Third reading of this first one is ordinance 14-57. Approve amendment to chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-35M design standards for single and two-family structures. The next one is ordinance 14-58. Approve amendment to chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-23.1 Traditional Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Second reading, ordinance 14-58. Approve amendment to chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-23.1 Traditional Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Ordinance 14-58. Approve amendment to chapter 30 zoning ordinance to create section 30-23.1 Traditional Neighborhood Design Overlay District. Okay, so if anybody out there would like to come to speak to one or both of these, feel free to come up to the microphone now, for public comments. Anybody like to comment on either one or both of them? Please come up to the microphone. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jennifer Sunstrom. I'm with the Realtors Association of Northeast Wisconsin. The business address is W. 6124 AeroTech Drive, Appleton, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
We have, as an association, over 1,500 members in Northeast Wisconsin, and 180 from the Oshkosh market area. Our formal written comments, I know, have already been distributed to you, and we have already previously discussed them. I just want to summarize them for the record for this evening. The proposed ordinance, we believe, has improved since it was originally proposed, and our members have not taken any real issue with the first part of the ordinance concerning the universal design standards. Their concern and objection relates to the traditional neighborhood overlay, specifically the process by which an application for a TNO is submitted and approved. As it stands, any person, whether they even live in the targeted neighborhood or not, could submit an application for a TNO and start the ball rolling, in which neighbors would have to react by attending meetings and hearings in order to object to the inclusion of their property. Our members believe that a certain percentage of affected property owners should have to proactively sign the petition before it is accepted by the city. If it is not the intention of the city to force an overlay district on property owners and neighborhoods that do not want it, then there should be no problem including language in the ordinance that requires at least some level of support before a permit is submitted. As to determining the appropriate percent, it should not be hard to do. We recommend it as an association, 75 percent. But essentially, anything would be better than the 0 percent of support that is technically required under this ordinance. As it currently is written, the application to have an overlay district could easily divide a neighborhood, pitting neighbor against neighbor, rather than bringing neighborhoods together. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Sunstrom, excuse me. The memo that was distributed to us earlier this evening, they, in one paragraph, it references, you know, related to your percentage. You reference 75, and I quote, 75 percent of affected homeowners. Shortly after that, in the, in your comments, you reference 75 percent of the property owners. How would you define, is, you've got two different terms there. Which is it? And how would you define property owners? Would you deem it to be owner-occupied properties? Because in some areas where this particular ordinance, basically the genesis of why we are doing this, you may have a minority of owner-occupied properties that may want the overlay, and so therefore, if you put in some type of a percentage, owner-occupied people who want this could be held hostage to non-owner-occupied properties. Is that correct?
In our comments, we did mention 75 percent of property owners, whether that is the owner of a property that has a home on it, home on it, or a property in general. It could be a vacant lot. Our association believes that when you own a property, there should be some level of rights that are attached to being a property owner. We do understand, though, through conversations, that the city, like you said, does have concerns about neighborhoods where there is a very mixed level of owner-occupied properties versus rentals, and that's why I said, and we, the association has been saying, as we've been meeting with people, well, let's talk about the percentage. Right now, it's essentially, this could go through without anybody technically in that neighborhood supporting the overlay. Let's talk about a percentage, talk about a percentage that the council feels comfortable with. If you want to set a percentage of owner-occupied, if you want to set a percentage of non-owner-occupied units that would have to support it, there's plenty of room for discussion on what a percentage should be, thus far to understanding there has not been any opening to discuss a percentage, period, included in the ordinance, and that's what we were asking for, is a discussion that would say, at least a certain number of people who live in that neighborhood should want this before the ball is rolling and it suddenly is applied to them.
Okay, would you define the Realtors Association as a special interest group?
I would say, depending on the issue, there are special interests we represent. Given that our members, if you were to say Realtors specifically, really have nothing to gain or lose on what this ordinance does, they are speaking up on behalf of homeowners and property owners and just good public policy in the city of Oshkosh, then I guess that would be their special interest in this particular circumstance.
Well, wouldn't your members have something to gain by having a, an ordinance which would enhance equity in properties and make properties more valuable?
They can, they can gain if properties are more valuable. They also can lose if people are deterred from buying in the city of Oshkosh, or if overall, the rights and privileges attached to the ownership of property are lost to government regulation.
Well, couldn't they also lose by having properties that lose market value because of issues next door to them, or something like that?
Absolutely, and that's why our association has been advocating for a number of years. The city of Oshkosh adopt a basic maintenance housing code, and adopt a policy in the city to enable it to enforce that code.
Okay. Because I think the, the special interest that we need to pay most attention to is the special interest deemed as the homeowners' association of the city of Oshkosh, which is the 63-plus-thousand people that this, that these seven people represent. Now, I'll, I'll go back to, I think you said that, based on this percentage and this difference in this, these two sentences that I noted, affected homeowners and property owners, you're saying that you are, you would consider owner-occupied, you might consider whatever? Is that, you're just, you're just throwing this out there, and 75 percent is kind of your, your opening bid?
Well, we mentioned 75, because it does reflect a majority, a supermajority of the affected property owners. But for quite, quite a while now, the association has been trying to engage council members and staff in a discussion about how is this permit process going to look? And as it stands right now, the objection is the fact that a person who does not even live in a neighborhood could submit an application to apply a traditional neighborhood overlay to another neighborhood, that process could begin, and all of a sudden, neighbors are, a neighborhood is going to have to start reacting and attending meetings and hearings and trying to figure out what this means, and rather than simply trying to have neighbors come together and work together in looking at the possibility of an overlay, and coming together as a neighborhood to submit that application.
But, and just, just one last question. I believe our form of government is a constitutional republic, not necessarily a democracy, where the form of government is set up to protect the minority from the tyranny of the majority. Is that correct?
I'm not really sure what I recognize sometimes our government structure to look like anymore.
But, you know, just, just because, you know, 50.1 percent say, you know, what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, just because you may have 51.1 percent of people agreeing on, on proposal X, that may not be in the best interests of the whole or for the entire community. Is that correct?
Well, if you're talking about a neighborhood, and if 51 percent of those neighbors felt that there should be a traditional neighborhood overlay, at least that would have required some proactive discussions as a neighborhood. Whereas your ordinance stands right now, there wouldn't have to be any level of support or communication among neighbors in order to have this applied to them.
Well, I, I think that that, I think you're taking, you're, I think you're reading it at a rather extreme level. I do believe that if, yes, you wanted to say something?
I was going to say, I am reading the ordinance as it's written and how it could be applied, and, as I said in my comments, if that's not the intention behind this ordinance, then I think there is a lot of room for, for the possibility of more clearly articulating and ensuring the intention of what level of support would be required to apply a traditional neighborhood overlay to a neighborhood. We've also had the discussions that communities adopt an ordinance, and council members come and go, staff members come and go, and intentions of ordinances can change drastically over time.
Yes, as well as ordinances can change based on the makeup of whatever city council is seated at that time.
So if the intention of this city council is not to apply a traditional neighborhood overlay to a neighborhood where by and large, most of the property owners are not in support of it, then our request is to more clearly articulate that intention within the language of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come forward at this point? As you know, I'm coming forward. Again, this is the first reading of both of these ordinances. They will be read again next time, they'll be voted on next time. In terms of this, the council asked some time ago that the city come up with some design standards, and over a process of a year, better than a year, there's been discussion, there've been discussion with people in the community, and the staff came up with some recommendations. Those recommendations went to the planning commission, and the planning commission came up with some, some different thoughts now, and so, about some, some kinds of issues. Also along the way, as was, was indicated by Ms. Sunstrom, she talked to a number of council members too, so I think a number of people have, have a lot of background leading into this. The staff and the planning commission had a couple different perspectives on things, and I understand, Mr. Roloff, you'd like some direction, and what basically happened is, the staff made a set of recommendations to the planning commission. The planning commission changed a few things on there, and that what the staff would like to know is which, which direction the council would rather go. Are they okay with it as it is now for now? Recognizing that next time, there can be changes. I mean, there can be amendments to it next time. I think the feeling is, is to try and get as, as much together ahead of time.
We want to get as close to your base draft as possible, and because there were, as Ms. Sunstrom said, there were, there were meetings that were held prior to staff presenting this to the plan commission. Plan commission made some changes, so we'd like to get at least a good discussion on council, so that when we bring something to you the next time. It's in close to final form, but everyone has the prerogative to, to, to make some amendments upon more reflection, but the more direction you can give us tonight, and I think it'll be easier as we approach the, the final discussion and debate on it.
Basically, as written, it's the planning commission's model, which is the staff, staff presentation based on discussions over the past year, and the planning commission made, made a couple of changes, so.
And Darren's memo identifies six, six areas that were discussed.
Okay, so I think, I think we'll do, if you want to, Mr. Davis maybe wants to make a few comments, and then council members ask questions, and then the question to the council for tonight is, are there a couple of these pieces, if the council would like to see change between this meeting and next time, the way they're presented to us, or at least the amendments can be put up in an appropriate way?
I think, I think Alan's ready to make a little presentation.
Mr. Davis wants to make a few comments, and he can correct me if I'm wrong in anything I said there.
Just a few comments, and then Mr. Buck has some exhibits that we'd like to display, so everybody has a good idea of those six elements, but, Mr. Roloff, and you're correct that there's been, it's kind of a evolving ordinance to this point, and we want to make sure everybody understands what was, was done before, what the plan commission's recommending now, and what kind of direction we really need for adoption potentially at the February 25th meeting. So we want to make sure we put ourselves in the position for that adoption on the 25th, and any kind of direction we can get tonight would get us closer to that target for the 25th.
Okay, I just want to make it clear that this doesn't represent a vote or a No, it doesn't. Theta complete or anything like that, because I suspect we're going to hear from some people between now and then regardless of what's said here tonight, so anything can change in the way of amendments.
Yes. With that, I'd like to have Mr. Buck show you the exhibits he's prepared and relate to the, the, the direction we're looking for.
Thank you. Okay, as manager Roloff and Director Davis had said, there were six items that really came through the plan commission, the plan commission recommended changes on, so I'll just go over there really quick, there's a couple of them that probably will have additional discussion. But the first would, should porch enclosure language be included in the citywide or universal design standards? That was basically a requirement in traditional neighborhood overlay that porches remain 60 percent transparent or open. They couldn't be completely closed off. Plan commission recommended against that. Staff also had recommended against that. So, that's really not in there. The second one was, should metal doors be acceptable replacements on a front, building's front facade? Staff and the plan commission both recommended to include that. The third item was, should there be a requirement placed in the overlay to require that a specific number of homeowners be in support of the overlay before an application be considered or the process to repeal, which kind of had a little bit of discussion on just now. Plan commission recommended against that. This was kind of a, a large one, it goes through multiple sections of the universal and the overlay code, but it was discussion on sides visible from the street. As you read through the ordinances, a lot of it's front facade and sides visible from the street. Through the workshops and the open houses, there was discussion on what that exactly, how much of the side that represented. Staff agreed that it should be more clearly defined. We went to plan commission and basically said, well, we could define it in our stance one of two ways. You could do it as a linear footage from the front facade. We recommended a 15 feet, primarily because the proximity houses and other amenities in, in traditional neighborhoods, there's not a lot of setback, can't see a lot of the side, you know, as you go past, standing at just the right angle, you can, of course, see the entire side. But we threw out also a percentage of the building side facade. A discussion at plan commission took place, and the plan commission made the recommendation that the entire side facade be included when you say visible from the street. Fronts and side visible from the street would include all side and the front. So that is a change that went into both the drafts, and what you can see on the screen, I think, is a, is a representation of three houses on a block in a traditional neighborhood. The three yellow lines on there represent 15 feet, 20 feet, and 25 feet of a side facade, well, going back from the front facade, and in the blue line, which is a little bit harder to see, the first dash is a 25 foot, or 25 percent of that building side, the second is 50, and the final, obviously going all the way back, is 100, which is what the plan commission recommended. So there are subtle differences. In staff's recommendation, we had thought a linear footage would be much easier to administer, it'd be more equitable. If you have a real deep house, a percentage of a side facade is going to be much larger than a linear footage, and the intent is really to keep that, that visibility from the street, retaining the architectural features of the house visible from the street. So that is an item, and I don't know if you want to talk about these, or you want me to go through all of them quickly and talk about them individually?
Let's just keep going.
Keep going? Okay, the fifth item, multiple sections of the code, both universal and the overlay, especially in the overlay standards, traditional neighborhood overlay, trigger the design regulations to kick in at a 50 percent change to a facade. Now, through the workshops and the open houses, they said, well, 50 percent, that's, I think the quote that we heard was death by a thousand windows or death by a thousand cuts, to, once you accumulate that 50 percentage, the house is going to be substantially altered at that point. So staff did bring that to the plan commission. We agreed that you could substantially alter a facade at a 50 percent level, and we recommended a zero, any change, 0 percent, no trigger, would kick in the design standards. Plan commission reviewed that, and they did agree to remove the 50 percent trigger and just make it any change. Now, I guess just to qualify that a little bit, throughout the standards, there was great attempts by staff and the stakeholder group and the steering committee to allow alternate materials, to allow variations, so they're not super hard and fast, but at a 0 percent, any change at that point would have to go through review. So that's what came through plan commission for recommendation, and then we changed multiple sections of the code to remove should from the code and replace it with shall, which is more appropriate ordinance language. So those were the six changes. The two big ones that I think need further direction for us were that side elevation determination, and also to discuss the percentage for front facades. So what you see on, on the screen right now are three pictures. The top one, I don't know how well they come out up there. The top one is just basically outlining what a front facade is. It doesn't include the gable ends, but it includes basically the entire front facade. There's a porch on this house, the porch would not be included in that, it's a separate item. The second image, basically, we, we darkened out the windows and the door and took the percentage of that. That equates to a little bit over 30 percent of that front facade. And then the final kind of blocks out the entire first floor, that represents 50 percent of the facade. So you can kind of see without doing a lot of different graphics at what percentage rates change can affect a facade of the home. It's very basic calculation, you take the area of the wall and the area of the change. So, this is sort of the graphic we used at the plan commission, kind of demonstrate what 50 is, and at 50, what impact that could have on it.
Mr. Buck, could you, going back to the percentage required for the change, I mean, what is, is, there was a staff recommendation? Can you give us a, basically what the staff recommendation was?
Sure. For the percent change, staff did recommend a zero trigger, so any change to a facade, front facade or a facade visible from the facade.
No, no, this wasn't, this wasn't the facade change, this is the percentage change related to the overlay.
For the size?
No, no, for the overlay.
Percentage of, okay.
The percentage required, excuse me.
Right, we, we were not in support of, of putting a qualifier on a, on an application, and Aaron might be better to speak on this, but zoning throughout the city, you know, can be acted on by petition of a property owner, can be by elected officials, it can be instituted by staff. We, very rarely would we do any type of zone change without having neighborhood meetings and public hearings. Obviously, you have to go through the plan commission, you have to go through two readings at the council, there's a lot of public input, and we, since I've been here for eight years, we have not done any zone changes without having neighborhood and affected property owner meetings, of course. So we didn't think it was necessary to have a percent buy-in, for some of the reasons that you just spoke of, you could effectively block the traditional overlay going onto a neighborhood by a majority of maybe non-owner-occupied homes, homeowners. So we felt that that wouldn't be necessary. Going through the regular legislative process would, would Going through the regular legislative process would pick that up, and if there was a vast opposition, I mean, you're going to hear it at the Plan Commission, and definitely hear it here.
And if we set some type, and if we did set some type of a percentage today, that when a home or a property is sold tomorrow, that calculation, I mean, if we would say owner occupied, percentage of owner occupied, and a property is sold at some later date, and it becomes a non-owner occupied, then that can change the calculation, and really we, the ordinance would not have, it would change based on just sales, correct?
For sure, it could change. I mean, that would kick in the, I mean, you could basically adopt it on a neighborhood, then sales change over time, and then repeal it, sales would change it, you could adopt it again, that would put it in more difficult to gauge.
Not only would you create a moving target, which is, I think, what both of you were saying, but it would be relatively unprecedented for zoning type of changes. As Dave said, zoning changes are initiated through a variety of ways, and we're proposing to be consistent with other zoning changes. Anybody in the city could come up and say they want to change the zoning of my house. Now, it's ridiculous to make that suggestion, but they have that right. That's pretty common in zoning circles, so that's why staff made the recommendation. It maintains consistency across our zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
One thing, and then, Mr. Cummings. So staff and the Plan Commission had the agreement, but not a percentage, so the question would be, is for us, do we want some percentage put in if we want to advise that? Mr. Cummings?
Mr. Buck, I believe at the Plan Commission meeting, the feeling of most of the commissioners was that a percentage, especially a high percentage, was a way to somewhat prohibit this from happening. I think one of the council members said it was, it was, not council members, commission members said it was a way to ensure that the rental properties could really kill one of these initiatives. Is that the feeling?
I believe I did hear that at the Plan Commission. During the discussion at the Plan Commission, it was felt that that was a way to block the use of the overlay.
Thank you.
Can I just add one question? I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Burge about this today, too, and there was reference to the fact that such a percentage could also violate the state statute, and I don't know what state statute, but apparently this came up during the discussion at the Plan Commission meeting. I see everyone's looking over towards the city attorney here.
Well, it really depends on if it's, if it becomes a policy, if it's a policy question, then we could probably do something with it, but the legality question gets back to what Lynn had, had a short, she did some research on it.
Under state law, with zoning changes, there is a provision where if zoning change is initiated, 20% of owners can sign a petition, and what it does is it forces the council to adopt something by a super majority vote, by three quarters of the members. So if you would create an ordinance where you allow a complete blocking by 25% or 50% or whatever percentage it is, you could potentially conflict with that state law. Under the state law, the council would still have the discretion of, you know, to weigh the various arguments and could pass the zone change above an objection of 20% or more of the property owners. That would, the proposed amendment potentially takes away that discretion that the statutes have vested in the council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of the staff, or any other questions? Go under the, in the way of providing directions, anybody want to see anything kind of changed or new amendments that'll be put up? I don't see any response there, although let's keep in mind that anything can change between now and the next meeting. Anybody can make an amendment on anything. There will be a public hearing on this again in two weeks, and council will, it'll be put up for council approval. And again, that time, any changes could be made, so if anybody's unhappy, they can contact council members, or, and let council members know what your thoughts are. Anything else needs to be said?
You mentioned the next time would be a hearing, it wouldn't be a formal hearing next time, but as council...
I mean, people will have the op...
Council's always permitted that.
I said it incorrectly, won't be a hearing formally, but what it will be, people will have the opportunity to come up and comment to council before council actually considers it for approval.
That is correct, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Davis?
Wanted to bring up one other point that the council's brought up, but since we might have new viewers tonight, this is proposed for new improvements. Everybody who's out there right now, you're basically grandfathered in, this would only be for improvements that you'd be making on your property, so it's nothing that would be prescriptive, that you'd have to go back in time, or we'd come over to your house and say, you've got to change this now because we passed this. This has nothing to do with that, that's all going to be going forward when somebody chooses to make any improvements to their property.
I appreciate that, that's helpful, because that's probably important to a lot of people out there.
Yes.
Okay. See, no more comments, we will move forward. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 14-59, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-04, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway and Utilities, First Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Northside Bowen Street. Read it once again. Resolution 14-59, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-04, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway and Utilities, First Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Northside Bowen Street. If anybody wants to speak to that, they start walking towards the microphone. Resolution 14-59, Approval of Final Resolution for Special Assessments, Contract Number 14-04, Paving, Sidewalk, Driveway and Utilities, First Local Street Concrete Paving Program, Northside Bowen Street.
My name is Gordon Omen, and...
Can you turn the microphone down towards you? You're a little shorter than the last person that was there, so...
My name is Gordon Omen, and I live in the 1333 Bowen Street. I am the lucky winner because I have, I got the prize of $11,000 for this sidewalk and this project and this special assessment. I am really kindly asking the city council to reconsider this, and I'll tell you why. This is, this $11,509, it's actually a half of my annual income, okay, that I have to pay the taxes on, it's a gross, actually. I earn $12 an hour. I wish I had 20, so I don't have to stand here and basically beg, right? Unfortunately, I have a house on the, on the corner of Bowen and Custer, so in a few years, Custer Street is going to be done, too, right? I don't have this money, and I know there are options here, right, you know, offer 10 years with a 6%, and 15 years with a 6%. Even if I take 15 years with a 6%, 6% is a very high interest rate mortgage, and this is how I look at it, because I already have a mortgage for the house, because I wanted to be a proud, you know, homeowner, because I came to the United States 14 years ago and chose the country to live here, and I always thought this is a great country to improve yourself, to, you know, better yourself, I went to the college, I did everything I was supposed to do, okay? Unfortunately, I still work for 12 hours a day, because I have access, right? This is too much, believe me, because when I look at this, the concrete, the amount that I have to pay for a concrete, for a street that is right now perfect, right, because it was done about 15 years ago, I'm in the Bowen Street with a curb and custer and all kinds of things, it's $7,000. The amount that I have to pay for a sidewalk is $2,000. That's $9,000, guys. I don't have that money. And I was looking, I don't know, have you ever driven, you know, in that area to see these 15 houses, how they look like, how they rich they are, and the people that they live there, how they really have a lot of money so they can afford things like this? I'm not saying that we shouldn't pay. We should pay some, but I really kindly ask you to reconsider this, because I really don't have it. And even, I have to take 15, right, years, because I don't have other one, I don't have any other choice. That's additional $2,000 a year that I don't have, because I'm not quite sure if I'm going to get a raise next year. This year, I only got a 3%. Unfortunately, I'm standing here and talking to you, telling you really a personal story, but this is not just me. A lot of people here in that area where I live, we don't have much. We wish we do, but we don't, because if we had much, you, I mean, the city would have much, too, but we don't. This is what we have, this is the reality. This is half of my annual income. Believe me, I don't feel comfortable standing there and talking to you, because I feel ashamed, because I can't do much, I can't do better, because I do have a college degree, two of them, one from the UWO, but I'm still a associate, because I can't choose another job, because there is none. If there was, I would, but there isn't. I wish I could find something different, but there is not. So I just cannot get over this, I almost got a heart attack when I got this, believe me, because this is $11,509. I am a single household, and my income is considered as a low income. I refuse to go and get for the, you know, those programs that you can, you know, that the government offers for this and that, because that's against my values, because I believe if I work hard, I can get it. Somehow I can. Thank you for your time, and I would love you to consider this, because what it says here, is this a reasonable price? Is this a reasonable assessment in this time, in this economy, when everything is just, all the prices are, when we have to pay now for our health insurance? Where do I find this money? I don't have a tree, it doesn't grow on a tree. It would be great if we all had one, but we don't, it's not there. So, we all do reflect. I'm kindly asking you again to reconsider this, and see if we can find some kind of a solution, not just for me, for all these 15 houses, because these are the people, they have to come up with $100,000, and that's a lot of money. So, city should come up with something, too. I don't understand, why do we have to pay for a concrete? I can understand we have to pay for some parts, whatever, but why do we have to pay for a concrete? I'm hoping that you will try to put yourself in my shoes, and I'm sure if you receive this, you would have the same, you know, really big throat. You would have the same reaction we did, because it's a lot of money, and I'm not really sure yet if this is really such a, let's say, a hot thing, like you have to do it, because otherwise the health is, you know, we're all going to die, this, you know, we don't do it right now. Reconsider that for us, we are the citizens, we do pay the taxes. To ask you a question, where the money for taxes is, it's just pointless, right? Why do we pay our taxes? We pay the taxes through the, you know, ownership of the property, we pay the taxes through the, you know, gasoline, because that's what's all for the roads and stuff, we pay them, you know, everywhere, really everywhere. What do we get in return as a citizen? I don't know, this is what I got, I don't know about you guys. I got myself a very nice present for 2014, and I'm sure in about two years or three years, Custer Street, because I'm on the corner, it's going to be done, completely, and I am ready for it. Not ready, I can be ready for it, but I didn't expect this. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'm hoping that before you make the final decision, try to put yourself in my shoes, in the shoes of the ordinary people, and that's us, that's me, that's my neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
My name is Pat Nichols, and a couple of meetings back, I heard him talking about the prices of some of these things like road construction...
Excuse me, could you give us your address, please?
I had it, 1329 Bowen Street.
Okay, thank you.
A little while back, they gave prices of the road construction, laterals and whatever, and they was giving us 2013 prices, now what are they doing that for when 2014 is upon us? Why don't they give us for the year that we're on this, this business? I mean, that's going to be that much more.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? See, nobody else come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on Resolution 14-59.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and Mr. Godey?
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Tonight, you had a hearing, our open house, kind of like prior to the council meeting? Yes. And it was explained to the citizens that these are all estimated costs, and that we always estimate on the higher sites, that we don't have to have another public hearing, correct?
We do our best to convey that, I will say, however, the straight line concrete paving is a fixed rate for Bowen Street, the side streets are estimated high, but the large portion of the concrete paving, it is, that is fixed at what it is based on last year's construction and the furniture of the lots.
Okay.
But we do, yes, we do make our...
Okay. One of the citizens referenced to, what is the city's portion of the pay of this, could you just tell, from the capital improvement budget, how much the city's paying for this road construction, roughly? Do you have that? Otherwise, I have it in front of me.
I have it here, too, if you, unless you were going to read it.
No, go right ahead.
We had estimated a street construction cost of 525,000. Of that cost, the residents are paying 131,800, and if you look through these sheets, they actually have calculated, as Mr. Godey had indicated, a little high on some of the cost, we come up with a total of closer to 188,000, but as compared to the city cost, is estimated at 393,000. So normally, it's supposed to be considered, the resident on each side pays one-third, so two-thirds of the cost is supposed to be paid for by residents. In this case, because we have a lot of short blocks, a lot of corner lots, the city is picking up a higher portion of the, of the construction cost.
Okay.
Additionally, if I can jump in on that quickly, the resident, the majority of the lots along here are zoned R1, R2 residential. Per our policy, they are capped at being built for a third of a 32-foot street, Bowen Street being an arterial through the area, is actually being built at 42, so there's 10 additional feet of what city is paying for, 100% that is not assessed at all to the residents.
Okay. She also mentioned that she lived in a corner, and I live in a corner, and obviously my street was done two years ago and around the corner. If the street on the adjacent to that gets done, we give a percentage break to that also, correct?
There is a reduction for corner lots in the policy, that 50% of the lot will basically be reduced for a lot up to 150 feet in depth, so up to 75 feet of reduction on a long side of a corner.
So when Custer is done, that's when she would get the 50% break? You're seeing for that property, that for the short estimate of footage that is on for this year, there is already a 50% break, but really, the main paving on Custer would get the more impact of that 50% reduction.
I had gotten a citizen email earlier today, he was questioning, he had built a home in 2010 in this area, and his concrete sidewalks and things were in good shape, we also prorate that, too, correct? If there's, if there's, if there's sidewalks that don't need to be taken out, if sidewalks do have to be taken out due to construction and they're within a couple of years, that's also a discounted rate normally?
If we, if the city went through and did the rehab, and this happened a little bit when we escalated our CIP program, when we didn't quite, we had done streets and they moved in, if the city went through and did sidewalk rehab on a street within the last two years, and we had to remove those sidewalk squares again, we would not bill the property owner, regardless of the reason they had to come out. I believe that was adopted by council's kind of direction to the city staff a couple of years back, probably about 2009, and we first ran into that. If there are sidewalk squares that are in good condition that we have to remove to replace the property owner's utility laterals, those are assessed back to the property owner because they had to come out to replace their utility lateral. If there are squares that are in good condition that we have to remove to make handicap ramps work, or adjust to make sidewalk meet grade and get it tied back in with a new street... work, or adjust to make sidewalk meet grade and get it tied back in with the new street, the city covers those costs. Additionally, if the city, we take out a, a single square that's left over, if everything else around it's coming out, we have ones still left over, we take that out and replace that, and that's a city cost. So it's defective ones or utility related that the property owner pays for.
Okay. And then just finally, one, one final question, because I know some citizens have said the street's in such great shape, but could you just give us the years of the sanitary sewer to water, storm sewers, so that the citizens realize there's more than just the street why we're doing this project?
Okay. So the, the actual street, the, the whole length of Bowen Street from Bay Shore all the way to Harrison Street was paved in 1968. So it's 46 years old. As far as the sanitary sewer, in the section of, of that we're paving between New York and Nevada, that is a 1938 sanitary sewer. And it's one of those odd situations where you actually have a double main on both terraces. And so by reconstructing the street with a new interceptor, we're able to, able to eliminate one of those double mains.
Okay. And then there's some water that was pre-1950s, correct?
Right. And, and there's a minimal amount of storm sewer. There's only one block between New York and Tennessee that has, actually has storm sewer right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, staff? Other discussion? Okay. Then I'll bring it back to council. I ask clerk, take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-59.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried Seven?
Okay, it takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is an opportunity, you have to make either positive or negative statements about something going on in the city. If you'd like to make some comments regarding the city, please come forward to the microphone. If you do, please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Give us your name and address. Direct your comments to council directly. Nothing else on the agenda can be talked to at this point in time, and no electioneering. So.
My name is Patricia Dina. I talked with the public works guy, and I need to talk to you people. Yes, of last Thursday to Friday. There's not been troubling done. There's not been ice taken care of. I had a handicapped gentleman give me a ride in my wheelchair back from my home on Monroe. You're talking about sidewalks in it. I think you need to get public works out, start checking sidewalks. Sidewalks are heaping. The wheelchair don't want to go up. You've got an inch and a half to two inches, three inches of ice buildup on the driveway to the sidewalk. I don't know how much more I got to say, but something needs to be done. I had a gentleman just come home the other day, and he was out cleaning up the sidewalks. And Chris said the same thing. There's something wrong. He's handicapped, I'm handicapped. You know, if you want to be a homeowner, it's your responsibility to take care of it. You need to enforce. I don't care if there's a patch of ice. It's ice. There's an ordinance. Sidewalks should be cleaned off. This stuff shouldn't be like this. I couldn't even push the wheel over. I had to take my foot to try to move the, the wheelchair. It's not going to stop me from being home. I need to get out. That's why we have sidewalks, to get out. And I just want to inform Nikki, this weekend is pull or plunge. Nick, I hope you get over $100,000. Too bad I can't be there, but if everybody wants to donate some money, appreciate it.
Just one quick question. The property you're talking about, it's a private property?
Yes. And I, and I'm not afraid to, I'm not afraid to say where it is. It's a corner.
No, that's fine, but so.
We, if she has an address, we take complaints, we need the address.
But don't wait one or two days, because this, it's this thing.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that if, if people do have concerns, again, that number that they can call if they have.
Patty, Steve's in the back, and Steve would be happy to get that address from you.
Mr. Willo, you need to know too.
Thank you.
If you're the city manager, you need to know what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have that telephone number again, that people can call?
The engineering division phone number is 236-5065.
Okay, thank you. So if you have concerns about sidewalks in the neighborhood, you can call that number, and we'll follow up. Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward at this point?
Diane Nichols, and I live at 1329 Bone Street. And I have a problem. We live the second house from the corner. My lovely neighbor, the one I was talking, she lives on the corner. They, but your street department is absolutely terrible. They bring everything down to my house. We sometimes pay 40, $80 for it to have these streets fixed, and your city dumps them. He knows we just got done, and he'll dump them again. We'll be standing right outside, and he'll dump them again. So I keep calling your city thing, and that last year, that was, I had to go to the doctor, and it looked just like a big mountain. I called it up, and the guy said, "Oh, it's not that bad, is it?" I said, "Well, I am calling the TV account to use how you dump everything into my lot." Well, he came out, and he said, "Oh, it's a mistake. It's a mistake." Well, a couple of days later, he moaned again. I called again. Her lot on the corner, they took the fire hydrant down and broke it. He said, "You're calling the wrong number, lady. You should be calling the water department." I said, "No, I saw it happen, and it came from your man from the, from the sidewalk guy, how this guy." This is what they do. But we can't keep it up anytime. Why should we pay almost $80 a day keeping it? We think you got it done, then they come back again, then you go to bed at night, and they clean it again. They go, but he brings all this stuff all the way down the street, and he dumps it right in my house. He could smooth it out before he got to the coast. Not that my neighbor wants it, but just a little before they dump it into my driveway. This is getting ridiculous.
You're talking about the plow?
The plow, yes. And then they said, "Get the sidewalks." Well, we got gravel sidewalks. Of course, we're going to pay more than somebody else for the other sewer. But that's not the problem. My husband is always going out for the curb and has to fix it up, cement it up himself, because they wreck everything. So why should we be paying so much money for your sidewalk and your road when we have to do all the work? It could reduce our price if nobody else is in my neighbors, get a few other ones. This is ridiculous when you tell them the price. My niece had hers done over a few years ago, and she lived on the corner, but she didn't have to pay this kind of money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
Same corner, there are ten guys.
If you have something to say, you, you can, you can come up here, but.
The guy, they come so close to the curb.
Wait, come on up. Give us your name and address.
Same guy that was up here.
I know, but still, give us your name and address again, please.
Same address as yours. So they come and they, they keep going just a little bit at a time. That's nonsense. In other words, then he got so close to the curb, he knocked that much of the curb off. I mean, I, I don't know what's going on in this city.
Yeah, I think if they knock the curb off, you can let the city know, and it'll be replaced in the spring. Is that correct?
This is in the section that's having a reconstruction project.
I fixed it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come forward? See, no one else come forward. That takes us to the consent agenda items. This is a group of items that are viewed as being non-controversial, and as such, they'll be presented to the council as a package for approval by the council as a package. If either a citizen or a council member would like an item removed, they can ask for that, and I will remove the item from the consent agenda for separate consideration. What I'm going to do is read three of these. If you'd like to speak to any one of these, please come forward as I read that particular item. Come up to the microphone, again, give us your, your name and address. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from January 28, 2014. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from December 5, 2013. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. Brennan went for alleged damages to his vehicle from hitting a pothole. A second one, Germantown Mutual Insurance on behalf of Courtney Bowler for alleged damages from a snowplow. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. Don Millis, agent for claimant for QuickTrip in the amount of $99,871.10 plus interest for alleged excessive assessments at 2400 South Washburn Street, 2115 Jackson Street, and 215 West 20th Avenue. Resolution 14-60, approval of change order number one for public works contract number 13-27 with Michael's Corporation for Concrete and Asphalt Crushing. Resolution 14-61, approval of engineering services with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for the design of Snell Road sanitary sewer pump station. Resolution 14-62, cancel outstanding checks right off delinquent and uncollectible accounts. Resolution 14-63, support AB 68, the Clean Waters Health Economy Act phosphorus reform legislation. Resolution 14-64, approve appointments to advisory parks board, sustainability advisory board, Grand Opera House Advisory Board. Resolution 14-65, approve combination Class A license, agent change, special Class B licenses, operator licenses, taxi cab driver license, and secondhand dealer license. I see no one coming forward to speak to those, any, those items. Anyone on the council like to ask questions about any of these? Discuss any of them, or poll any of them? Yeah, Mr. Cummings?
Questions on two, thank you, Mayor Tower. The first is number eight. Is this becoming a trend? Didn't we just have Walgreens do the same thing, and now we've got QuickTrip doing it? Is this, is this, is this a trend now with these, these big operations?
I think you're seeing a trend that's happening statewide since the Walgreens case in Madison. We've discussed the Walgreens cases here. I think QuickTrip is the next one, and franchises, I think that the tendency is there. I think it was a terrible decision, in my opinion. I think the attorney agrees with me. I think the Supreme Court erred, but I think they've opened the floodgates. We're not the only ones getting sued, but, you know, just for the public, and I appreciate the question, Mr. Cummings, because the public needs to realize that these properties are asking for special treatment on their assessments. We don't believe it's warranted. We believe that our assessor's office, and in this case, our, now our contract assessors are both following the assessor's manual that's prescribed by the State Department of Revenue. And now, I think they've opened up the floodgates, and there's, there's a cottage industry to, to sue over property assessments for commercial properties, making the argument that their special way of construction somehow gives them the right to have their property values diminished. So unfortunately, it really is a travesty, but you've, you've picked on it, that the, the floodgates are starting to open up a little more.
And kind of as a follow-up, didn't the city provide some zoning changes to allow these businesses to locate in the areas that they're in?
Anytime you have these types of, you know, franchises, you're going to see those types of zoning. Yeah, we welcome them into our community, and, yeah.
So we help them locate here, and now they're, for lack of a better term, kind of biting the hand that feeds them?
Yes.
Yes.
So the public needs to be aware of it.
And this, and this particular remedy is only available to these types of businesses? It's not available to, is?
They're citing a different law. They're citing this specific case.
Anyone could file a claim for excessive assessment. It's, we're seeing them typically from these types of entities.
So what you're saying is we're probably going to see more of these in the future?
I would say the, the.
It's likely.
These ones are going to, you're, yes, you're going to see them a lot more.
Cummings?
And what is the cost to the city in legal fees to, to the taxpayer to defend these type of cases?
We do have insurance coverage for defense costs for these, up to $50,000. So under our insurance, we do tender, we do have defense through the League of Municipalities insurance, but if we go over the $50,000, and typically these cases do have a lot of expert testimony, a lot of additional costs, so there is that potential. But we do have that coverage up to the $50,000. However, I will say, in addition to the outside legal counsel, myself and my assistant do spend a significant amount of time in, also the assessor's office assisting with these. So those costs the city does pay for.
So they're, they're really, the taxpayer is paying for all of this.
Correct. And if we were to lose, then that would essentially redistribute the property tax pie, in my opinion disproportionately, to residential property owners, which is patently unfair. And Mr. Davis is chomping at the bit to comment in case there's anything, because he supervises the assessor's office.
Mr. Pack asked about the QuickTrip projects, and we have approved a number of those projects over the last few years, and there have been cases where we have issued some kind of exception or planned development agreement that doesn't specifically follow the normal code, but we granted those as part of the review and approval process. So just to follow up on, on your point, yes, we have made some, some accommodations for their projects.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Let me just see here. It is, I'll find it here. Resolution 14-62, the canceling of outstanding checks. I don't know if Mr. Roth can answer this, or if it's an attorney question. A lot of these are from 2010, 2012, et cetera. Should we be adjusting by policy, or our ordinance, or anything that could tighten the route, the network on these, that these people pay it within a year or six months? I mean, a lot of them are bankruptcies, so obviously, they're out of the house and things like that. You know, we just passed an ordinance not too long ago, that, you know, within two years, our street projects will be built out. Is there any way we can shorten the timeframe, that maybe we can go after these people that are delinquent and paying their water accounts, or delinquent and paying other fees owed to the city? Can we tighten the ordinance in some capacity, so that we're not writing off so much money?
The, depending on which bill, which delinquent bill you're talking about, there's, there's several.
Kind of a general at this point.
We generally will turn things over to collection to, to get our money back on certain bills. With respect to utility bills, we have the ability to put it on the property tax roll. The ones that you have before you, the properties in question filed for bankruptcy in the time between they were delinquent and the time we were able to put it on the tax bill. I'm, I've asked the city attorney and the finance department to look and see if there are ways that we can speed that up. In some cases, we may not be able to, because water utilities are regulated by the Public Service Commission. That is not necessarily the same for sanitary sewer and storm sewer utilities, but we're taking a look at those things. But cleverly, these folks filed for bankruptcy within a narrow enough window that they became unsecured debt. And once you're in a bankruptcy mode, the unsecured debt is a lot more difficult to collect on. Once we get in on the property tax roll, we're generally first in line, even with a, even with a bankruptcy. So that's, we're looking at different ways we can do that. Other collectibles, like ambulance bills, which is a substantial part of this, we have a collection process, and within so many days, we turn it over to collections. If our initial company can't do it, then they turn it over to a specialized collection, where they involve attorneys, and, and they go after it much more aggressively. But after three years or so, from a, an accounting standpoint, we write the debts off. Even with your action tonight, our ambulance service, for example, our collection service, will continue to pursue these, but just from an accounting standpoint, we're writing them off.
That being said, are, with the collection agencies and, and all these other delinquent accounts, by policy or by ordinance or by state statute, can we tighten any timelines to shorten? Or do we have, you know, it goes to the billing agency, and they automatically, in our contract, gets, you know, six months to work on it. If they don't get it in six months, they give it to the next agency? Or can we bring all that to a tighter, tighter thing, so that we're not sitting here, the taxpayers, I guess, aren't sitting here covering all these bills during these collection times?
The agencies that we work with realize that your odds of collecting a debt are much better the quicker you jump on it. So they're not sitting on them. They're moving forward. In some cases, you know, if there's an estate or something like that, there may be a delay. But again, they're not, they understand that it's, it's in their best interest as well to move forward with these, and that your, your odds of collecting are just much better the closer in time you are, so.
Okay. So there's nothing really, from our end, as a policy or anything that would help?
I think we're aggressively pursuing them. Unfortunately, a lot of these bills, especially if somebody goes out of business, we've pretty much lost our recourse. You'll notice that a lot of those are LLCs that are the delinquents. Utility bills, if, if they're still in existence by November fifteenth, we got them. We got them through the property tax bill and you won't even see those. These are ones that, that slipped through the cracks because of provisions in the law mostly, but as, as the city attorney said, our folks recognize the value of pursuing them aggressively early on, but at a certain point, you have to cut your losses and you have to recognize that these things can't, are very likely not going to get collected.
Ask a follow-up question, then Mr. Cummings, because the one of, of most concern to me here is the Mokler Properties one. Here we have an organization with, with twenty-two properties with over thirty thousand dollars. They went through bankruptcy, Chapter eleven reorganization, so that means they're out there advertising and doing this. Do we have a way, if somebody has gone through this and has been delinquent in the past, to be more on top of these? In other words, because some of these obviously were out there for several months, there are bills that weren't paid for months in here. I mean, is there a way that if somebody, in a way of tightening, another way of tightening on something like this, I mean, this is a kind of a business that systematically didn't pay their utility bills over a, a long period of time and declared bankruptcy and then is out there operating the next day? So are we, how are we protected in the future against seeing this in, in another year after this had a systematic lack of payment?
We're looking, with respect to the utility bills, what we're looking at doing is can we more frequently put these on the property tax bill within the state law? Public Service Commission might be a little tougher because of water, because water is regulated, but sanitary sewer and storm sewer are not regulated by the Public Service Commission. We've been treating them one in the same, so putting the same limitations on collection of sewer and storm sewer as we have on water. We know that we can separate those, so those are the types of things we're looking at because I agree, I think it's ridiculous that, that we have to write something like this off because they've cleverly gotten around it. So we're going to try to find a way to close, for lack of a better term, a loophole that that, that these folks have found.
Well, that being said, where, where there's a history of this company and now they're reoperating, can we put them on like, if they don't pay within a certain, a month or two months, they're delinquent, we can shut them off? Or we can do other things?
We're working with the finance department and we're looking at all those options. Yep. That is one of the options that.
I mean, obviously I understand Mr. Mokler passed away several years ago or a couple of years ago and that might have triggered some of this, but I, I just think that there are absentee landlords out there that we probably have other numerous, and are we looking into all of them that are starting to get maybe delinquent and, you know, you're, you're kind of on a pay-go situation, or you're not going to get services from us because you are constantly delinquent?
We're looking at all those things. The other thing I threw out there is, is there a way we could require some type of security deposit for utilities to just stay proactive on it? Because it's unfair to, to you and me that we're paying our bills on time and the vast majority of people in town pay their bills on time, but when you see something as egregious as this, it, it's got staff stirred, it's gotten the council stirred, and I think we're, we're going to actively pursue ways we can go after these a little more aggressively.
Well, again, with the door open, if there's something you need from council, I guess, I think, I'm sure, we could get enough support here to do a policy or if we have to tighten an ordinance some way. It's a lot of money when you think about, I mean, small amounts in a lot of cases, but in a lot of cases, there's some big ones too, and it's just not right.
Mr. Cummings?
I recall looking at this a couple of years ago, and there are other outfits that aren't paying their bills, and I believe some of these rental units were housing people on government assistance or through the Housing Authority. Can, I'll ask Sean, can we look at some of these, these, these rental operators that are getting money from the government by clockwork, but yet are not paying the bills to the city for water and so forth?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think the property is owned by the Housing Authority, but if they're getting, if they're getting, you know, subsidies through the, through the, you know, Section Eight program, and that, that's through the county housing authority, but I, I, I don't know what property owners.
Can we do something where, where before we, people are placed in these rental units, we're looking, we look at the history of the owners as far as taxes and water bills and every citations with the city, code violations, that type of thing?
Yeah, there might be, and I certainly can bring it up with the, the staff at the authorities at the agency there. I, I don't, I don't know what kind of screening's done of the, of the, the property owners who have received the subsidies.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on this? Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll ask for a motion, a second on the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Council discussion direction, city manager, and future agenda items, there are a couple of things there having to do with workshops. One is a workshop to discuss special event policies. I assume that's going to be scheduled at some point?
Yeah, staff had a meeting.
We've got, we've gotten some little bit of information on that.
Yeah, we're, we're still collecting staff comments so we can consolidate them and we're going to be forwarding them to you, and I think after we do that, then we can, we can schedule a meeting. And then the one-on-way, Neighbor Works, you've got to talk about that.
And I, I asked for talking to them, so they'll give a report back to us and see where they, see where they stand, where they plan to go from now, because we've been operating for a period of time and I think we, we need to have that information, so we can schedule that. Appreciate it.
So we'll get those on.
Okay, council member announcements and statements. Two thousand fourteen goals for the city manager, Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I apologize to any council members that might have had difficulty opening the attachment. For whatever reason, city's office or whatever, we're perfect, not everybody can get it. So we are, we struggled with council members getting the attachment when I sent it out. So anyways, they all have it now. We had discussed, we pulled it at the last council meeting, we had discussed the goals for the city manager. There are three goals for two thousand fourteen, not as many as we've had in the past, but I think they are very good goals. And I'll just briefly read them and then if there's any discussion, we can have any discussion if Mr. Roloff wants to make any comments about his goals. First one is develop a five-year plan to reduce city's general obligation debt to approximately seventy percent of equalized value. Develop priorities of, of the capital improvement budget to get to targeted levels. Provide council with recommended priorities of the capital improvement budget by September first, two thousand fourteen. The second goal is to conduct the structural review of the city's health insurance plan. Identify ways to control city's increasing costs and contributions for health insurance and, and benefit package. Develop a plan to phase in changes over time. Provide review and recommendations by council by June first, two thousand fourteen. And the third goal is to develop a set of metrics that can monitor the progress of the city's investment in economic development. Those are the three goals that council has discussed with the city manager. There's been great dialogue between council and the city manager, and Mr. Roloff wanted to really get this out right away or as soon as possible, and I think the first meeting in February is getting it out there pretty quick. But some of that is direction to staff and others, so that's the reason for bringing it forward. And there's any comments or a, anything from council, entertain it now.
I think a couple of comments, I, I think upfront, in contrast to the last two or three years, there are not specific dollars tied to each one of these goals. We have done that the last couple of years because there was no salary increase for the city manager, so we felt that they're going above and beyond the normal task. These are things that are kind of above and beyond and things that have a really high priority for the council. He's got lots of other tasks and goals to get accomplished during the next year, so I think that, that ought to be made. But these are three that we think are particularly important and need special attention, but there is no separate dollar total attached to that in case somebody's followed this the past several years. Other council members or Mr. Roloff? Anyone?
I, I appreciate the feedback. I think these are doable goals. The, I always appreciated the, the financial incentive, but we're going to be aggressively pursuing these regardless of what the price tag is on these, and this is something that staff's very committed to do and we're happy to, to be doing this. Question I would have, do we want to put this on a resolution for the next meeting for formal adoption? We can put it on the next agenda?
Probably should.
Even though the, just so that it's formal?
Unless anybody wants to make any, any changes, we do this, we'll put this on for formal adoption, so it'll be out there on the record. I think that's a good idea, so can we add that to the agenda for adoption?
Yep, we'll do that next meeting.
Here's the consensus on that is yes.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, again, a second opportunity for citizen statements to the council.
I'm sorry, it'll just be two seconds. And just a reminder, I had mentioned last fall that I knew I would be traveling for business the month of February, and I did, I did just get the call to be in St. Louis, so I will be gone the week of the twenty-third. So I will not be here due to business travel on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me, Mr. Peck.
Eleven plus fourteen, and your financial advisor.
Thank you.
Okay, second opportunity for citizen statements to the council. Again, this opportunity to comment on something going on in the city or not going on, that something you might be concerned about, ask you to give us your name, address. Limit your comments to five minutes, nothing on the agenda that we've already talked about, speak directly to the council, and no electioneering.
Lori Palmyer, two twelve West Parkway Avenue. And I want to thank this council for everything that they've done tonight. I, I don't want to obviously overspeak on something that's already been on the agenda tonight. While they may be tangential, I'll try to stay away from that, so.
I appreciate that.
Just give me a signal if I get too close. So I just would like to, first of all, also identify myself as a member of the Middle Village Neighborhood Association. Middle Village is a neighborhood just a block from here that has about two hundred and fifty properties roughly, and I just would like to offer up something for the council's consideration. Steve Cummings, Councilman Cummings, was at a meeting we held last year regarding some concerns about a particular situation in the neighborhood, and we're also working with Planning Services Division on, on some of our goals and objectives, which hopefully will be coming into a final plan within this next month. But this particular issue kind of went underground for a while and is resurfacing, and it relates to some absentee landlords that own boarding houses, rooming houses, and it relates to, I won't name the social media site, but it's a very large one that most of you know, and this particular landlord we've tried to work with on a very civil basis and thought we had a tentative agreement that the behavior would not continue. This particular individual has decided to brag about being a slumlord in our city and has multiple properties here. Posted photos of a recently acquired property and the quote was "slummin' ain't easy." Okay? This particular landlord also owns, or also had multiple violations that he ignored to the point that the city had to take him to court before he remedied them and they were dismissed. My question, or my request, is that we start to maybe hold accountable some of the landlord behavior by, I know that there is a restriction, they can't apply for certain city muddies if they've had like code violations, but I don't recall if it's outstanding or if they've just ever had them. But some kind of mechanism to hold them accountable, and it, it relates a little bit to what was said earlier about companies asking for special recalculations, and this particular property, I also noticed on the tax bill, had the assessed value decreased by twenty thousand dollars over the course of one year. So from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, it went down by twenty thousand and the only thing that changed with, was that he continued a behavior or a selection of certain tenants that is creating difficulties in our neighborhood. I'm sorry to sound so cryptic and vague. I, we do intend to provide a more documented fact sheet on this, but I just wanted to ask, you know, whether or not there is some way that we can hold accountable more professional behavior of some of these investment owners, and I also want to speak, I can't. Someone else spoke earlier about whether or not they represented neighborhood interests. And if I'm getting too close, shut me off here.
No, you're okay.
Okay. I actually called that office asking for data and assistance and was told that because we were not a member of the association, they could not help us. So I find it somewhat insulting that they would try to advocate for our neighborhood when they have no intention of assisting with any sharing of information. And again, I apologize for being so vague, but I wanted to stay away from other things that were brought up tonight, so thank you.
As a member of that association, I can get the information you want.
Nice.
And I, one, I think we should talk, because of that meeting, I had assumed things had been, so.
Yes, and things have come back to increase rather than decrease.
Okay, hopefully also when we talk with Neighbor Works and get into discussion of neighborhood, I think these kinds of things need to be brought up and we need to begin to look at what we can do. The other thing I'd suggest is that maybe you indicate to that individual who was here tonight, that you shared that information with us tonight and write to the association. The second thing is, is that there's also an apartment association, which you might indicate to them, because they advocate some other things at the same way, so we'll begin to look into it. And I think with the neighborhood programs, hopefully we can make some progress in these areas, because those are concerns of all the council members, so.
Yes.
What we can do is probably limited.
Right.
But we may be able to do some things.
Right, and I guess the other, I guess, a peripheral issue is the, the question about rooming houses and the, the allowance of those to continue and, you know, whether or not a occupancy permit of eleven units within a rooming house is a reasonable, you know, thing to allow to continue, you know, and, and given that that particular property had a decrease in the assessed value, but is cramming folks in like sardines, and probably my guess is at three hundred bucks a pop, you know, he's, you know, he's grossing thirty, three hundred a month while he's, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
One last question.
Okay, a couple last questions.
When, when will you be providing background and documentation?
Well, I've got some notes pulled together and I'm just trying to get some other facts before I submit that to you guys for your consideration. So within the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Peck, were you going to ask a question also?
No, I was just on the same line.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say thank you for coming forward and, and being an involved member in our community and letting us know what's going on, because it's, it's through feedback from our citizens that we can be better representatives up here.
Yeah, and, and kind of striking against something was said earlier tonight, I mean, one person can lead a positive impact on the community, as opposed to looking at it as one person leading a negative impact on the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, city manager, announcements and statements?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roloff, isn't there an event on March thirty-first?
We can always do a shameless promotion for State of the City.
Shamelessly promote.
Monday, March thirty-first at six P M., presentation at six-thirty, and Emily should be calling you, if she hasn't done so already, about including you in part of the presentation. We'll be, we'll be contacting you. In fact, the mayor and I were talking just today, and the council recently got their, their shirts with the city logo, and mayor threw out the suggestion that perhaps when you come and do your little video, video interview, perhaps you wear that. Now, I know it's a short sleeve shirt, tough it out for a cold day, but, but it'd be a great, great addition.
I already proclaimed this morning that there will be no more sub-zero temperatures until two thousand fifteen. We're through for two thousand. Everybody heard it, send the emails in.
So you can wear the golf shirt.
And I, I just thought of one other thing as, as we're, as we're shamelessly promoting things. Ms. Lawrence and, and Ms. Huber, do we have to notice a possible meeting of, or gathering of the council for next Monday night? I would remind all of you that we have received an invitation from Mr. Joe Furlough for next Monday, which is the kickoff meeting for that thing that we call Ashgosh on Broadway. So the two new members of the council, I hope you're prepared.
I don't think there's going to be half of us there, so I won't be there.
Just those with the talent.
Okay.
That excludes me, so.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at this point.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned.